Yeah.
So it's a rubber cap and you know how they kept it in place? Four by four posts that they put in the ground. That's it.
They're usually mega logged and thrust blocked. You have to do that. That just never was done. I knew that when as soon as I seen it, I knew what was wrong.
I know that's all they did.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on. It worked earlier and it's not now.
Okay.
Well, there is, that is true, but.
No, you can't.
Yes, you can.
No, you can't. I brought that up more than once.
Mike did just say it depends on what.
Well, that I get.
Stuff like that, you can't use.
Yeah, well.
It's.
So where you got, Mike? You shutting down?
Well, I tested all this out before. It worked fine. Now I, this, I don't know what happened to this computer. It is stuck thinking and thinking and thinking. I can't even do anything. Just hourglassed. Won't, won't, I would, I can't even see the start. Yeah. I can't even see it on a, um, I can't even see the start menu. I'm not gonna disagree with her. That is not my beloved computer. It's the cheapie you need. No, it's just been six.
You don't have budgeting for a new one. Mike?
They, they asked for a new one. I said, no, you bring that from home. And they said, fine, we'll do with what we got.
Do we have to go through the blood delinquency again?
Yes.
I know, but I'm just.
Okay.
Kind of redundant. It's redundant. It's a work session. It's not a conversation. It's a work session. All right. You ready, Mike?
Yeah.
Are we ready?
Yep.
You ready too, Josie? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and call this council budget work session to order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, doing roll call. All council members are present. Do we have any public comments? Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to F one. All right. All right, can you? All right, so we'll go through, uh, through the PDF here on the screen. So we got, anybody watching at home, we can kind of follow along here. First things first, some, uh, some basic background on, uh, on where we're sitting here. Um, we've got, um, wages include the projected COLA. So we got union contracts out there, basically, is how we, uh, how we see that. Um, right now, I'm just making the assumption that health insurance will go up twenty-five percent. I don't really think that that's gonna be the case, but, um, at this point in the process, it's better to be budgeting that way. Uh, workers' comp insurance, um, based on twenty twenty-three REITs plus a fifteen percent inflationary factor. Um, again, I actually think that reality would be less than that, but we'll have to wait to actually see that come in. Property, uh, liability insurance, um, ten percent actually might be pretty close. I can imagine that being, I, I don't really imagine we'll be below eight, if you, if you ask my honest opinion on that. Um, dental insurance, um, we've got plus twenty. We haven't had, um, increases in that for, for a number of years. We didn't have any increases and now that seems like that's coming home to roost finally. Life, um, accidental death and dismemberment insurance, um, that should be zero, um, based on, uh, last, uh, last go around on that. This is kind of the, the part I'm not as impressed with or not as happy with on, uh, this budget, but, um, there is no addition to fund balance, but there's also no subtraction, right? So, um, taxable market value, um, right now, based on the county's mini report, uh, from the spring, uh, we're seeing a total market value increase of eleven point one six percent. Uh, so remember that includes existing homes that have gone up in value, new, new properties, residential, commercial, whatever it might be, um, all going into making up that eleven point one six percent. All right, we kind of got, got the table of contents. We'll just jump in. We'll treat these like slides here. Um, at any point, anybody wants more detailed information on whatever it is, you can wait till the end. You can jump in at the time. Makes no different, makes no ever mind to me. So today we're doing operating budgets. Some of the enterprise funds do have a component of, um, capital in there and for that purpose, we've simply left what we got approved for twenty twenty-three and had been scheduled for twenty-four in there as a placeholder. We'll be updating those and, uh, addressing those at the, uh, next work session on August second, which in case anybody's forgotten that, it'll be a Wednesday, um, for national night out. Um, so then once I want to go through, um, operating budgets, remember that Fund nine twenty is where we house our general fund, uh, capital expenditures. Um, those are segmented out. Then September fifth, uh, we'll set the preliminary levy and preliminary budget. Um, there, the big thing is, is whatever you set the preliminary levy for, you cannot go above that. You can go below that in December, but you cannot go above it. So, uh, and then December fifth, set the final budget. Um, and that's it, right? We'll go through the budget, go through the levy and, um, um, and then, uh, and then that's that. So, right now, what you got before you is, um, the makings of how we'd end up at a, uh, slightly more than four million dollar levy. That is an eleven percent increase over the prior year. And we see how we break these, break the total levy down into a general fund levy, capital maintenance levy, street construction levy, EDA levy, and abatement levy, which functionally works. It basically functionally just gets rolled into the general fund levy, but, um, Minnesota Department of Revenue says we have to present that separate, so. Um, and then debt service levy. Um, we see the, the changes, uh, general fund levy going up a little more than four percent, uh, street construction levy, uh, a little less than four, EDA levies going up twelve. That is a mirror of. There's an actual formula based on state statute. You gotta match up against, uh, you, your max is, uh, um, relative to, um, the estimated market value. Abatement levy will go down a smidge based on the actual that we're seeing. Um, then debt service levy, and those are prescribed numbers. Um, the big difference here is the capital maintenance levy. We took some of that last year. Keep the tax rate down. We gotta get back on track. Um, can't, uh, can't let that go. So we basically see a three hundred thousand dollar increase there. So that's pretty substantial. We got a graph here, total levy. This is kind of how this works. Um, like I've said before, um, when we're talking about levy, it's gonna go up over time unless your population goes down and you have almost no inflation, your levy will go up over time, no matter how you cut it. And which is why I always say, um, don't spend too much time looking at levies. You should spend your time looking at a tax rate. This budget, um, with that roughly four million dollar total levy would have us projected at a, uh. Oh, did I not get? I didn't update that top line. Nonetheless, projected tax rate for twenty-four is fifty-two point four nine one. Um, twenty twenty-three, we're at fifty-two point six eight two. So it's a negligible difference, right? About a third of a percent.
Mike, are you saying that, that top line you just didn't update it was supposed to be the same as that bottom line?
Yeah.
Okay.
That should, that should have gotten updated to twenty twenty-four and then that fifty-seven should have gotten down to fifty-two four nine one.
Question about that.
Yeah.
If. Let's just use a even figure, fifty percent last year and this year.
Yep.
It looks like it doesn't go up at all, but if their property value increased, their tax would have increased too, even though the rate is still the same.
If the rate is the same, but your property value has gone up, yes, there would be an increase.
Is there any way that when we look at these things, we can look at it with the market values incorporated into it, so we can actually see the percentage that voters and the people in the community are paying? Because the tax rate, it sounds great, we're going down, but I guarantee you the market value went up more than point three six percent. So taxpayers are still gonna pay more. So if it's framed like this, s- it might show the impression that we are lowering taxes, but then they're gonna get their tax statements and it's gonna be, they're gonna have to pay more. So I don't think tax rate is really an accurate recommend, uh, accurate way of measuring what people actually pay, because.
I don't think he's trying to do that.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying, is there another way that we can maybe have another, another graph or information that shows with the market adjusted values? So that we can actually decide as a council what stuff will actually cost people. Because if you look at it in this terms, like, oh, at least the tax rate's not going up. No, but people are still paying more in taxes.
Would be because of the price of the house.
Correct. The tax rate, the tax rate is going down, it looks like, but what you actually pay goes up based on the market and.
And it would depend on each household, right?
Yeah.
That's never gonna plateau, you know, the value of a home is, might slow down, but it's still always gonna.
With inflationary pressure and all that, yeah, correct. I just didn't know if there's a better figure that we can use other than tax rate with the, you know.
The, the, the only thing I've got. Let's see if this comes up in a timely fashion.
You, you, you say on the bottom, it says tax rate equals total levy forward slash market value.
Right.
So obviously, market value comes into.
Yeah, and we. And we.
That market value isn't just the value of that one house necessarily going up either. It's the addition of all the other properties and.
Right.
Commercial buildings and whatnot, but.
But it doesn't.
But I agree with you that it would be nice to actually see that, yeah.
Yeah, and so, I mean, we can, we can do sample ones, right? I mean, it's not particularly difficult math. We could say we're on a sample one hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. The issue get to be is, is that every one hundred and fifty thousand dollar home was worth a different amount the prior year and not all one hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes will have gone up with the same value.
But can't we look at, like, the county, they, they estimated it's gonna, house values are gonna go up eleven percent. So can't we take, I mean, if you take eleven percent minus the point three six tax rate, you're still gonna see a ten percent increase on our taxes, so of what we actually pay.
So we can show. This gets to be a lot of information, but it's not that, I mean, it's fun for, fun for some people, I guess. Um, this is, whoops, and we do share this each, each year, but this is. Fundamentally, when you see tax rate basically at zero, what you're seeing is, is that the increase in the levy and the increase in the market value has been roughly equal, right? Market value goes up eleven percent, levy goes up eleven. That means your tax rate ended up hovering at the same.
Right.
The actual experience of any individual parcel is going to be different, but the net result overall is, is that. And that's what we're seeing here. So this is our eleven point one six, right? Flash the formula there, probably over prior year. And in the end here, we have the levy going up at roughly eleven, and that is why we end up at this, this tax rate that is substantively the same, right? I mean, a third, a third percent down isn't gonna be a noticeable amount.
But it, what I'm saying is if we wanted people to pay the same on our taxes, we would have to lower our levy by the equivalent value of what the housing market goes up by. That's. To keep it, because people don't care what the tax rate is. People care what they pay, you know, so it's, it's kind of.
I, I agree. And, and so, and back in May, we had this slide, and the intent of this slide was to present the, the, the difficult math.
Yep.
On, on this. If I, if I assume that. I think on this one, I, what did I assume? Market value was up ten percent. If, if I think my, my property value went up seven and a half percent, you know, your, a levy reduction, you need to, you need, your levy reduction needs to be more than that. I mean, you, you gotta assume that, you know, here, eight percent levy reduction is only possible if there's at least a thirteen percent available to cut. I mean, it, it becomes the, it's the math problem. And eventually to say, all right, we want the actual dollars that people actually pay year over year to go down. One, that's a difficult feat to do in one year, and you are almost certainly talking about not doing something that we are currently doing, which can be fine, right? I mean, that could be, we're, you know, closing parks or we're not filling pot holders or whatever the thing is, right? But if the, if the intent is, we want to have the, the actual dollar amount that people pay in taxes to go down repeatedly year after year, you're, you're cutting a lot. I mean, truth be told, you're, you are saying, we are going to stop doing a lot of the things that we are currently doing, and you'll have to perpetually do that. And even if you do that, eventually you will still reach a point in time where you'll run out of things to cut and you'll be back to the same spot where market value went up eleven. Tax rate, you know, market value goes up eleven, levy goes up eleven, tax rate ends up being. So the goal, what, what I've, what I've pointed out, and Dan and Steve especially will remember, because they've been here the whole time I've been here, is, I mean, the, what I've talked about is, let's have that long-term plan of, you know. It's important what is good for the I C N E residents and taxpayers today, but it also matters a great deal, what is their experience in, with regard to taxes over twenty, thirty, and forty years, right? Are we doing the things that we need to do today to get to be debt-free? Are we making, are we managing fund balance responsibly and are we avoiding debt? So those are the kinds of things. I, if we wanna have a lower tax rate, all for it, but just to be clear, if we want actual dollars paid to go down year over year, that's an incredibly heavy lift and, and some of those other goals are absolutely at risk at that point.
Mm-hmm.
And then some of that too is, if you let some of that stuff go, it can cost you a lot of money down the road.
Right.
And that's some where.
Street projects right now, the street maintenance program, if we would have kept that money in, and, and Dan was part of that, the rest of you had nothing to do with us. But that was all removed, the money was there, and it was pulled from that department or that expenditure to lower taxes in the city of I C N E and town time. We're paying double for that now to get back to where it was.
Right.
And to do that, instead of a project being three hundred thousand dollars to fix this street, if, if we didn't have that maintenance program in there, that street's gonna cost eight hundred to a million dollars instead of that six, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. By doing that, we're, we're actually saving money in the long run.
I think you could still make the argument, just to counter argue what you're saying there though, is that the dollar is worth less now than it was then too. So, I mean, you're, the inflation, everything is relative, right? So, uh, at the time, and not to defend that decision to not improve the streets, because I think if you're gonna cut somewhere, that's probably not the place to do it, because that's one of the basic responsibilities we have is to, hey, we should have roads people can drive on, right? But, I mean, that, during the time when they did that, I mean, I think you could see some of the reasoning why they may have chosen to do that and the difficult financial times that they were going through at that point, but.
Those are the major expenses.
Yeah, right.
In a year's time, occurs is.
That's just using example.
Yeah.
But also you gotta also realize, what he's showing you here is I C N E level, not county, not school board, none of that is reflected into this. And that's where the people see the hit on their taxes. That's why I preach this more times than not. He's actually saying that we're gonna have a change of point three six percent in tax rate, zero, minus point three six percent. When you're gonna see the counties, there's going up twenty, twenty-five percent with the school board and everything else in it. We can't control that. None, zero, none. All you can say is, we have lowered, we dropped our tax rate by one percent, three percent, whatever. What the county does, we have no control over. This is just our operating area. And it took me a while to figure that out too, trust me.
Mike, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at total levies. So in two thousand nineteen, it looks like the city spent, if, can I use those words? The city spent two point seven five, it looks like, million. And in twenty twenty-four, we're projected to spend four million. So what is the average spend rate of the city in those six years? I was trying to do the math, but you were probably.
Are you looking at, on, on here, you're looking?
Yeah, the total levy.
Twenty eighteen, yep.
So it looks like, it looks like our spending is increasing every year exponentially compared to other years past.
Yeah.
Were there major projects in the last five years that, that we had to average that up?
So a good, a good chunk of that is right here. Where we weren't taking care of the maintenance. This right here, what I'm showing on here.
Okay.
Is we were not, basically, we were not handling our capital, is the fundamental problem. So when I got here, my first budget cycle we went through, um, I watched our police chief ask for two squad cars because he was hoping that maybe he would get one. And this is one of those deals where Travis had brought this up before, and I've said it a thousand times, is there are certain things you simply cannot get wrong. Handguns that work, tasers that work, squad cars that start every time. There are certain things you just have to get right. And the notion that at the time, we were spending a solid seventy-five thousand dollars a year, um, on fuel and, and maintenance, and solid fifty, fifty-five of that was maintenance on, on old, old squad cars. Well, that's enough to buy one. Like, we didn't. So we needed to commit to, let's actually start paying for the capital that we were never going to get away from in the first place anyway, and actually start to work this stuff. And when we get to the, and when we start talking about this levy, a huge component of, of the total levy is us taking care of capital. And there is a threshold when we get to. Let's pull, let's see if we can pull this up quick. We'll have to go with.
Twenty thirty, I think.
We'll have to go with our last one here, but when you start to look at different points in, in these funds. Right, so we've got this stuff scheduled for, this is nine twenty, right? So this is general fund. So this includes parks, police, that, you know, those are the primary info. And when you, take and come down and look at this running balance, it is tough, right? The, what we're levying right here, we are basically hovering back and forth over zero. But eventually we do get to a point where we actually start getting into the black solidly. And what you're seeing represented here is, this is the amount of time it is taking us since nineteen to catch up on the stuff that we had delayed before, that you don't get away from. And when we get to this point, yep, we will be able to reset this number, the levy for this nine twenty. We're gonna get to a point where we'll be able to reset that number on the general fund too. When we get to the point where the, the liquor store bonds are paid off, that's now an easy two fifty transfer. But we gotta stay the course and you gotta find a way to get those things paid off in seven years. But when you can suddenly transfer an extra two fifty, um, we did the rough math a couple of years ago, and we're probably twenty twenty budget. And then if you took that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer out of, uh, of the general fund, tax rate would go up fifteen percent overnight. Those are big, big deals, but to an extent, that's what we're seeing here. When you say, well, Jesus, total levy has gone up, part of it is, well, we, we gotta pay for capital. We, we, we had had the, the street, um, the street was the same deal. So we'd go back to, to this, and we'd start looking in twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen and nineteen. We weren't, we didn't have a, we had a list of street projects, um, but there was no identified funding. No, nobody had ever said, this is the, this is where the money comes from to actually do the projects that we identified in twenty ten. And so some of this is us just straight up catching up.
So what's the expectations over the, are we looking at twenty percent more spending every year, ten percent?
This, this is, this is my.
For the next few years?
This is my rough modeling. So when I look at, um, when I look forward, whoops, I don't wanna use that year. When I look forward, I'm gonna assume, estimate market value goes up five percent, because I'm looking at in the past and I'm seeing that rough, even when I include the great recession, total market value goes up at about five point six. So five is a little conservative, right? And to the extent that you see market values go up at that rate over time, I can also understand that I'm gonna have a certain inflation on general fund spending, right? Like, there's, you know, just the basic inflation, right? Four percent. Now, to the extent that those are both conservative numbers, I can now forward calculate tax rates. And this is what we're trying to understand here is, do we have that clear path? I know you've asked about that before when we put up that comparative rate, you know, can we get to where Otsego is, right? They just dropped under thirty for the first time. Is there a path? Yeah, there is. This is, this is our path, but we've gotta keep, keep that trucking along. In some years, we're gonna have, you know, a negative one percent, but other years, we're gonna get to have a negative five percent on the tax rate and keep marching it down.
Maybe for this to make better sense, what's our average growth revenue per year? Is it offsetting this?
Our growth revenue?
Well, okay, so new businesses, new housing, more taxes, so that, that's a, that revenue is growth to add onto the budget. So does it offset that line we see going up? I mean, it, we're not having to dig for money somewhere else. Other than. Our growth revenue, basically.
Yeah, I get what you're asking, but with, everything goes up with growth.
Right.
Price of squad cars. You still have inflation climbing, so even with growth, your, your levy can still go up. Cause of the inflation probably is gonna be higher than our growth rate. So let's go this way.
Yeah, right now, yes. Okay.
We can look.
Well, the one thing about the levy going up too is that you're, as that growth happens, you have, like I think Dan was kinda saying there too, is you have more services that you have to provide with the growth. So, I mean, you, the levy's going up because you're growing, not just because you're spending more. It's a combination of, of the two, you know, and so.
Yeah, it, it's important to remember, is when we have growth, we, I have, I have more, not just more, in the enterprise one, not just more lines of, of more water lines, more sewer lines, but there's more miles of road. There are more fire calls. There are more police calls. There are more calls for building permits. There are, I mean, there's, there's very little that we do that doesn't mean more when you have more population and, and more buildings, more market value.
I think George is saying, like, unilaterally, he wants both to go up at the same rate. Like, say if we have, if we're, we wanna see if we're gonna spend eleven percent more, we wanna see eleven percent growth in the population type thing, just to keep it kind of. Because we don't wanna have absorbed in spending in one area that just skyrockets the budget. You know, I mean, we're seeing some of these budgets are wildly different, but does the service and what we, what the citizens get actually reflect that? We don't know.
Or they're not getting any blessings.
Yeah, but are they getting amount of service that would compensate, or that would equal how much the costs are going up?
So, so you're, you're looking for like a cost per capita type?
Yeah, maybe.
I mean, is that?
Yeah, maybe.
This is also one of the, this is something I have right here.
And then maybe if we could see like what other cities are cost per capital or cost per capita, so we kind of have a, a baseline of.
We do have a little bit of this. We went over this in, in May. This is, this, the black line is us. Um, yellow is I C N E, uh, cities in I C N E County that are, you know, two, you know, basically us and Bram and, and Cambridge, right? And then this is class four cities across the state and where we combine, where we compare. We are in line with class four cities now. That's not necessarily a good or a bad thing in and of itself. But as far as when we compare, um, actual taxes per capita, um, you know, against all class four cities, six thirty in twenty twenty-one to four thirty-nine, four forty to six oh six, four sixty-five to five seventy-four. And if we're gonna say per capita, if we wanna understand it in that terms, you know, we do well. We do well.
I think you're right. I think that what the citizens care about is they want us to leave them alone and they want their taxes to go down. And then when they think.
Or, or not go down, but stay not huge increases, right?
Yeah, not increase, yeah.
What they have to pay.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody necessarily expects what they pay to go down, because inflation, that's almost impossible unless you really cut services.
But so then if that's the expectation, then it's really, the tax rate is, is a good measure then, you know what I mean?
No, the tax rate would have to equal the, the market value changes for it to be a good measure.
Right, so their taxes go up.
Their taxes stays.
Well, no, I understand that. I, I, I know that, but I'm just saying that you're, you're saying that if they don't, if they expect them to stay the same, then, yeah, I mean, we can still. Well, no, I understand that, I I know that, but I'm just saying that you're, you're saying that if they don't, if they expect them to stay the same, then, yeah, I mean, we can still use the tax rate to calculate what gets us to that point. And I think some sample housing that we can look at would be good, and I, I agree with it, the goal, the goal is to try to keep that actual cost that they're paying the same or less, right? So, uh, which is tough, it's really, really tough too, especially when, especially when, especially when the value of the homes, yeah, when the value of the homes is increasing.
Definitely. It's not gonna happen overnight, too, yeah.
It'll never happen.
Yeah, we can't control it.
You could leave, you could, the county, the school board, the city attorney, everybody could leave at zero percent.
Yeah.
But your tax, your property value increased, you're automatically paying more no matter what.
Which means everybody's spending more, or inflation is more, or something's going on.
Well, it's, it's important to remember too, is the market value increase is not a component of that is, you know, the increase, the annualized increase on existing structures. I mean, when you build new homes, you know, especially when they're doing a hundred of them a year, and they're all market value, you know, two fifty to two eighty. Well, you're stacking a lot of millions onto that market value every year, and that's on a new, that's on a new home, that wasn't collecting, nobody was collecting taxes on that before. To the extent that it was an empty lot, you were collecting nearly nothing, I mean, you really don't collect a lot on an empty lot, but, um, so there is, there is that component. Now, I mean, we can, we can go to the.
Know what that number is, I mean, the.
We can go to, we can go to the county and try to understand, like, hey, what is the?
What's the actual increase of the value of the home?
On an existing residential home, yeah, yeah, we can try to assess that all.
Yeah. But I like where you're heading, I like.
Yeah, couldn't, I mean, couldn't realistically you just take, if the county expects house values to go up eleven percent, and say we drop our tax rate one percent, that's still a ten percent increase people are gonna see in their taxes. So couldn't you just subtract the one number for the estimated market value from the change in the tax rate and your rate? I mean, I think that's the simplified version of it.
Well, and I, and I, I can understand that, that the. Part of it will be is you, at some point, the council have to say, this is what we don't wanna pay for. I mean, cause I'm, I run this, here, let me, let me give you a little insight here. When I run through these numbers, and let's go down to our first expense accounts, or actually, we'll skip down to a better, here, admin. When I start going through these expense accounts, I don't decide the end result first, right? So the easy pickings going through the budget is, a huge number of these are calculated amounts, right? I know what staff we have, and I know what contracts we have, this ends up being a calculated amount, this is a calculated amount, contracted services, this is a calculated amount, we have code maintenance is what it is. Para, calculated amount, para, para, I'm sorry, health insurance, calculated amount, workers' comp insurance, calculated amount. So all of this already, I. Unless council provides direction that we are going to stop providing this service, not meet statutory guidelines, or fire people. And that's not my, that's certainly not my spot. Now we're down to, all right, office supplies, you know, we can tweak office supplies a little bit, we also can't do without. Copying and duplicating supply, well, this is already at least previously approved, that's part of the deal. We got eleven thousand bucks of training and instruction, that's some, that's also an option. Professional services, um, you know, we've tried to use a city attorney last, but to some extent. Audit services, that's already a contracted amount, that's, that's a schedule, that was a five-year RFP that we did. On technology. Well, the anti-spam software is a pretty cheap one per month. But these ones, again, these are contracts, if we wanna go without some of this, we can do that, but again, that's, I mean, council direction, and I, FYI, I cannot go without my accounting software.
So I, I think, I think really what we're asking for is what would the tax rate need to be for a sample house to have the rate, to have the actual cost of their taxes stay the same? If we could get that number, so what you're saying is you go, you're going from the opposite of, you know, you're saying, okay, I start with this, this is what I have to spend, and like, build it up from there, right? And what we're saying is, we wanna take it from the opposite approach, we wanna say, here's what we, here's the max that we are willing to spend, that we do not wanna spend any more than we did, and we don't wanna charge any more for the actual taxpayer than we have the previous year. Or we wanna charge them less, and we wanna go the opposite, build it from the opposite direction, basically, that you, that you are, right? Am I understanding that?
Yeah.
Kind of, I mean, that, so, I mean, I think that would be a number that we would, I mean, just to know where, what, what would we have to cut to to make that happen? You know, that would be an interesting number to look at.
Or to make it a goal in the future.
Right.
Because I realize we're not gonna be able to do extreme cuts like that, but it would sure have, it'd be nice to have a solid number to work off of, because we're seeing this imaginary number move up. But the taxes are moving up, but it looks like the levy's the same, so we'd like a solid number to work off of, so we can really have a better eye in the future of how much taxes really are increasing per household.
The simple, the simple math in that scenario is if you, if, if we, if everybody, I mean, at this, cause we can't confirm with the county, like, individual. If we all agreed that roughly six percent increase on existing homes was a rough number, maybe it's seven and a half, maybe, probably not below five, that would seem unreasonable, but let's say it's six percent. You need a tax rate to go down six percent.
Yep. It's a perfect relationship.
That's it.
Yep.
That's what you need.
So and then you take six percent of the the levy, and that's what we'd have to cut, basically?
Well, and you actually.
In that circumstance.
And actually, you don't even quite have to do that.
So then.
So right here, this is.
Line was huge, it's there twenty-eight percent.
Well, some of that depends is when you're, if you're, if you're in your, if you're, if you're in your fifth year rotation on county assessor, then. You couldn't, it's not super hard to end up getting a, you know, four years kinda. Free, so to speak, but county assessor should be going through on a rotation and reviewing, explicitly reviewing each property every fifth year. But this is, you, you can watch this right down here, as we tweak the the levy, I'll tweak it up here. It'll adjust this amount, and this calculation will change accordingly based on the prior year. But we don't need to take six percent off.
Yeah, man, it's amazing how, I mean, a little bit here and a little bit there.
Let's, Jimmy, Jimmy, and I'm picking this number because Jimmy and I have looked at this once before, if you take seventy-five thousand off, that's already done two point one nine. That was just seventy-five grand. Now, the problem here is, is that if you get to, let's say, two fifty. Now you get to about six and a quarter, or six and a half percent down. Problem is, two hundred fifty's a lot. And this is already a budget that doesn't add to fund balance at all. And then at the end of the year, we're gonna present fund balance as a percent of next year's budget expenditures will have gone down as well.
One thing, Mike, that I didn't see on your notes there, and I, I'm not sure if maybe you had it in here further along, but the LGA funds that we, cause I think we're getting an extra three.
Yeah, roughly, it was, the rough math was three hundred, now, I think the three hundred is based on the prior calculation, so when you see it on this. Workbook. Right here. Where's my, go right here. So it really is only about two hundred, but the three hundred difference was what the legislation had been versus what it was revised to. Right, but either way, we picked up about two hundred thousand there.
So where did we put that?
Yeah, and the simple math on that is, whoops, it went right here.
Which is last year?
Well, no, it is the difference right here, right? So I'm, I'm, I have to levy that extra amount on here anyway.
Okay.
Right, so I got extra money, but I've gotta pick up this levy amount, and we have adjustments in compensation. We have twenty-five percent in health insurance, I. This is, that's the. So here, let's go back. As far as the levy this year.
As it's presented.
You know, general fund levy is only at, well, hundred and thirty. The, the increase is really, and levy ends up being here. Now, if we wanna say, where did, where is our lion's share within? The general fund, well, actually, let's just go back to right here. So for starters. Most of the general fund expenditures, of course, we've talked about that before, is is PD. After that, it's admin and streets, parks. And at some point, it's, you know, it's gotta be, what are we gonna? You know, what, what do we wanna not do? I mean, is, is really what it comes down to, because when I come down, let's just pick admin, it's first up. You know, I pick admin, yep, budget from twenty twenty-three there, yep, that went up. This not much, this not much, you know, that's, that's based on this number, but we're talking about an increase that is. Whoops. Our calculated, our calculated contract amounts. You know, training, instruction, didn't really change, whoops, come on, didn't really change. General supplies, I don't wanna make a hundred fifty bucks, I guess, professional services down. I mean, it, in the end, when we, we, we really have to decide, like, what is, what is the thing that we are doing that we're gonna stop doing?
You're saying the two hundred thousand extra that we had is gonna be chewed up mostly by the.
In, in the general fund, it's, it's the same as every other year, it's, the majority is wages and and personnel, I mean, that's, that is always the truth.
I have a question quick, I'm looking at this general fund operating budget summary one oh one, and there's building inspection admin, and that's almost three hundred thousand dollars. Can you explain what that is, is that, that must be more than, I mean, that's obviously more than one employee, but who's all included in that, or what's all included in that? It seems like a big, fairly large amount.
Yep, so, let's scroll down here, I tell you, we'll go to the detail. So this is where we see, wages and salaries is, uh, so we'll get all the way down here to the bottom, right, we're gonna see that two ninety-eight, that's our three hundred, right? Most of this, this two ninety-eight is simply. Right to there, that's basically staff. So that's two seventy-two out of that. Now. Most of the staff is gonna be building official and permit tech. We have some that, from, like, from Stephanie, some of her stuff gets coded there, but she's like five or ten percent. But the vast majority of this is, is, is Matt and Candy, one full-time, one part-time.
Do you anticipate any time where we, I mean, I think there's a recession coming, and do you anticipate maybe not having to have that permit ad, assistant? And just have the building inspector do it, or is that, is that, would be, that be unfeasible? I know in the current environment, people are building like crazy, but I think.
The permits has gone down this year, I mean, it's only at twenty-eight so far this year.
Yeah, I think it's gonna keep dropping.
It was twenty-three, I think, this year so far.
Yeah.
It's gonna keep.
That's a, that's a.
The counties fell off.
That's another part of where our LGA went, I mean, cause it's not one thing, right? There's not one. I mean, I'm basically budgeting for a further decrease in permit revenues. Now, I'm not as pessimistic, my first draft that I had in my office, I was considerably more pessimistic than I am today. I think the Federal Reserve will actually thread the needle, I think it's not going to be, I think it'll be despite themselves, but I think they'll still, couldn't pull it off, but. Um, I think if we have a recession, I don't think it's gonna be nearly as bad as I would have guessed six or twelve months ago.
Okay.
How about that? So I do have that revised upward, but nonetheless, even when I go back up and I say, all right, where are my permit revenues, this is it right here, whoops. This is where I'm looking, I mean, I'm still considering twenty twenty-four to be the worst year that we've had, basically, well, basically since, since great recession. But there, we've had years here, twenty, let's just pick twenty twenty, you know, twenty twenty, that was three, nearly four hundred thousand. I've got us at less than two. And. So back here in twenty twenty, actual permit revenues, we had, I can see right down here, three hundred ninety-two thousand. I scooted over here to what I legitimately think is fair. I meant less than two hundred thousand.
And we used to contract.
It would be great.
Yeah, min spec.
When, the nice thing about contracting out was when it was slow, you didn't pay as much, you know, but when it was busy, you paid more, so.
And part of the deal too is, is to remember, remember on, on building permit fees, it is against statute, you are not allowed to make money in the long run. You can in any one year, but you cannot make money on that, that's not the kinda thing that you should ever be considering, we'll balance our budget on that, that's not how that should ever work.
It's not a, it's not an enterprise fund.
It is not, it is there to make sure that the buildings built are safe, is the function.
I'm just looking at areas of possible inefficiency, there's got, there's got.
I've got a list, kinda, that's kind of a running list, sort of, but one of the things, thirty-five hundred dollars that we could cut was the agenda management platform, and I don't know how in the weeds you wanna get with this stuff today. But the, I, I love the, my personally, I love the agenda management platform, Steve, I know he doesn't like it, you'd rather just get the big PDF and go through it, right? But, uh, but thirty-five hundred dollars, I can deal with the PDF and not the agenda management platform. So that was one small, that's a small area, but that's the first one on my list.
The one thing I will say, which.
I knew you were gonna have something to say on it.
I disagree with all of that.
Is you have to look also, in a full year, of how much time it takes staff to put together a packet. And now, if you don't wanna look at those, that's one thing, but I don't wanna, it to not be shared, that there's other costs that get removed when you do some IT improvements, such as the agenda packet management. The rerouting of items that, if they get changed or anything, is we're talking over the course of the year, hours and hours, that you're paying staff to put that together. Plus, if they're big, you can't email them out, so there's other handicaps to that. So, yeah, it does make things easy and use, but when staff brings those things forward, we've, I don't have it top of my head tonight, but we do the math on how many hours it's take you to put together the agenda, Jaden. And and Anna used to work on it, we alleviated Anna out of that completely, for her to print all those PDFs.
And are those, those staff members aren't on a salary, they're hourly payroll?
Uh, hourly, yep. Both those two.
Okay.
So, not to say we can't cut it, I'm not saying that, I just won't say that there's other costs that you don't see that that alleviates by adding.
Well, that was just, that was just the first thing on my list, so, but I mean, you, you said.
Yeah, right, where.
I disagree on that, well, that's only thirty-five hundred dollars, I mean.
But I think.
It's gonna, it's gonna get tougher than that.
Right, no, no, I knew that the cities.
If we wanna make this a reality, we gotta really look at, and I looked at that cleaning's deal, you know, when we talked about that, that was four thousand a year, you know, I mean.
And I agree with you on that one.
You know, we, we gave some raises recently that I, you know, I mean, that was thirty thousand a year, I mean, that's, it's, it adds up in a hurry, and and we gotta be willing to look at everything, you know, so. How deep in the weeds you wanna get on this kinda stuff?
Deep as you wanna go, I'm all, I'm here all night.
No.
Well, you're here till ten, I guess, yeah.
Actually, this is more, right, what he's doing right now, is showing what he's setting. We're, when we get, you get into, you know, September, that's when we're gonna really.
Right, I mean, do we wanna, do we wanna maybe save some of this conversation?
I think a lot of this is right now, is he's just saying, this is what we're looking at doing, this is what I wanna do. You can go and absorb all this information, next month, it's gonna be the same thing, cause he's gonna go through the next set of things. But September and December is when we gotta really get in the, meet of this operation.
Yeah, I mean, this can go a variety of ways, this can be, hey, you guys are gonna look through this, and we're gonna ask questions, this can be, we're gonna provide direction, like, we wanna get to this point, what is? What can we even possibly cut?
I mean, I think, I think I love how you approach that with, we, I wanna look at the number, what does it need to be to not have an increase at the actual example house? You know, let's pick a house for an example, I think that's a great way to say, okay, what does, what's the goal? If we had to cut, what is the actual number that you'd have to cut? And I think that's a great, that would be really, really great information, I think, for us to have an actual dollar amount on that. And then you could sit and go through the budget and say, well, I could probably do without that, and that, and that, and that, maybe you can get to that dollar amount, maybe you can't, you know, but maybe.
Just it sets a goal.
But at least it sets a goal, I love that, so, that would be, I think, if we could take one thing away from the conversation we've had so far, Mike, would be if we could get an actual dollar amount.
I can work with that, I mean, that's, I can, yeah, I mean, that's, that, that works as instruction that I can actually, yeah. I mean, that's, that, that works as instruction that I can actually, yeah.
That way, at least we, we kind of know what, what would it take to do that, and, you know, but I mean, there's other things that I have on the list here, I mean, one of the biggest ones was the, the public works building, you know, that's two and a half million dollars that I think were scheduled in twenty twenty-five to spend, or?
Yeah, and we'd, we'd just, we, I mean, we can cursor discuss this now, but otherwise, that would definitely be on next work session's topic, but to the, but if there's instruction.
You know, it doesn't, it saves you money, but at some point, you are gonna have to do it one way or another, so, I mean, it, it, but it is, it potentially could be a savings, so, so, yeah, so I think, anyway, I'll let you keep going there, but that would be, I think if we could get that information, is what is the goal? And then, kind of work backwards from there would be useful, I think, to me, then I think to you guys, it sounds like as well, so.
Well, I could, I mean, I can work with it, I mean, this is a work session, so, I mean, if we want to say, all right, you know, we looked through the packet, we saw what we saw, and, you know, council agrees, like, hey, this is the, the goal, maybe we get there, maybe we don't, but this is the goal, I can work with that. I can bring something back, whether that's, you know, update at the first meeting in August, or second meeting in August. We could, we still call a third budget work session in August, we would do that at the end of the, the one on August second. You were to say, because we've, we've noticed and published and things like that, so we would just need to make that known. Otherwise, we're gonna add that discussion in September. Otherwise, if we're really unclear about where we want to go, we think there's still considerable debate or discussion, that's where, in September, you just set the levy higher than you know it needs to be, just so that you know you're gonna drop it down, right, you just, I think it's gonna be here, but I gotta give a little wiggle, so we're gonna put it here, and then arrive at that final number that's below that later on in December. And that buys you two more months of meetings.
So I have a, just a, I guess, it's kind of a little bit off topic, but, so there's only two ways to lower the levy, basically, is to bring in more revenue or spend less, correct? We're, we're focusing now on spending less, well, last meeting, we had the option to potentially bring in more revenue, so we wouldn't have to cut with the, with the THC, with the marijuana stuff. I mean, I was, I did some rough math on that, if, if we can clear three hundred thousand dollars a year, that's going to actually, I mean, you guys, he just plugged in, what, two hundred fifty thousand? And that's gonna lower your tax rate six percent every year, because you have a residual income from that opportunity. So I think maybe the fact that we didn't, we voted not to get information on that financially is kind of silly, because we're focusing on twenty-five hundred dollars here, twenty-five hundred dollars there, but then we didn't authorize them to look into something that could make us three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars a, a year, which would go right back into the tax base, so we wouldn't have to keep raising tax rates. And that money would stay in our community, the, the sale of marijuana in our community is gonna affect our community, so I think the money should stay in our community, because it's not, it's not necessarily something I want to endorse, but the fact that it's gonna be here no matter what, I think we should try and capitalize on that and get some information on that, that, so that was something I wanted to say from last time, because I think it's, it's kind of irresponsible to try and cut like this, but then not look at other revenue sources, which are totally, could be feasible, we don't know. I mean, it could be, say, if we added on to the liquor store, if we could get away with that, and then say we spend two hundred fifty thousand dollars to do that, well, what if we make that back in the first year? And then every year after that?
What happens, we lose a million dollars first year.
Yeah, but we don't know without doing some sort of analysis, correct?
But anyway, let's.
But I think that's just something, because, you know, we're looking at cutting, we're looking at cutting expenditures, what about increasing revenue? And that's one way to do it, which is gonna be a bigger, a bigger chunk than cutting out three thousand here, three thousand there, so I, I've-
I'm with you, and I struggled with that a lot, but then why don't we open up a gas station, or something we know is very profitable, we're not in business, open business, or whatever, whatever business may be profitable in the city, it's, we're, we're not in a business to be in business. That's just the way I look at it.
I, that's, that's, you, I deserve that criticism, I definitely deserve it, because it, it's a fair, it's a fair criticism, and it's a fair point for you to bring up, and it's, uh.
I mean, without the numbers, we can't even-
I know, but I mean, I just, I'm with George on that, that I just don't think that it is our job to be in business, and that's just completely on principle, and I, I know we're passing up dollars that we could use, and it would be really nice to have, but I just-
Saving our taxpayers.
Cannot do it, it's, I just don't think government should be involved in business, and that's it, that's, that's, but I, I deserve every bit of that criticism from you.
Me too.
All right, well, yeah, so you kind of have a sense of direction. I've got a sense of what you guys are looking for. Yeah. I mean, otherwise, you should remember, I mean, we're, you know, I, I'm looking a little farther, probably out than, than most people, and, you know, we gotta keep, I'm always gonna try to steer everybody toward those main goals, gotta have fund balance, gotta have a rainy day fund, gotta try to get debt-free, especially right now. I mean, you're talking at least, I mean, last time I checked, it was three hundred and thirty-three thousand for every million you borrow in interest. It's probably more than that now, and, but those are big, big deals, especially, that, when you get to those interest rates, it's a literal buy three, get one free, and we've gotta be able to, we've gotta be able to do it, and some of this, you know, whether it's Fund nine twenty or four twenty-five, some of it is, we've gotta get through the backlog, and get to that point where we've got a little bit of breathing room. And, and then, then things really start to hum along real nice, and some of it is, is being patient, but we can, we can get a rough math from, from the county on, what do we, what, what would the average existing home go up? Five, six, seven, whatever, and see what we can come up with, working backwards, yep.
And I, I think we owe it to the residents to look at it like that, because that's how they look at it, that's why they, that's what they want, I think, I believe that a hundred percent, that's probably the number one thing that they care about. Yeah, they want some services, but I mean, number one, they want to be left alone, and that includes their bank account, so.
Yep. So I think what I would, how I'd go about this probably is, stick to operating, or capital in, for the next meeting, just as we had scheduled, that's what we've published, that's what people would otherwise expect. And maybe we just plan on having that third session just right out of the chute. That way, at the second, then, second meeting in August, we'll come back, can get some update. I probably have still, well, not probably, I still am not gonna have final health insurance numbers, that is something that we usually get in, I think, October. So, doesn't really help with the preliminary at all, but fortunately, you can always go down. But I think we can, we can work on some updates there, see how close we can get to that goal, and then take it from there. We'll see, we'll see where we sit, we'll see where we stand, maybe we can get some new information about our thoughts on, or expectations about workers' comp insurance, or some other things like that, that are still just projections. I think that could, I can live with that. Does anybody want to discuss anything else, or mean, have we, I mean, I mean, it's kind of all there, and I'm always available.
So I, I do have something, it's probably a bit of a sore subject here, because we talked about it so many times, but let's say, for example, we didn't do the splash pad, and we pocketed that, what was it, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars out of the park reserve fund, or was it two hundred and eighteen, or?
Something like that, and it was, yeah, that'd be park dedication.
Park dedication funds, yes.
Something, something new, yeah.
Yep, so that's, that includes park improvements, so now, is, is there anything budgeted for park improvements in the park, in the parks department? I see that budget was like five hundred thousand.
That wouldn't, you wouldn't find that in the general fund. That would be here in nine twenty. So this is your list, so this is where you see that two eighteen, splash pads and restrooms right here.
Yep.
And it's, so then, these items, starting with PRC, it's these items this way. So it's off of this list, now, most of this list is, you know, maintenance and replacement, other than the splash pad, I'm, I'm having a hard time of thinking anything that we have listed on here that's new, to be honest.
That's the only thing that money can be used for, is new amenities, it can't be used for maintenance, but I see what you're saying, is do we, do we have something scheduled that is gonna come out of the general fund for parks that we could use that instead of?
Yes, that's what I'm getting at.
I mean, in the general fund, it's, you know, for park stuff, it is, you know, it's labor, and then after that, it, the, the two big expenditures are, are programming and street dances. You know, both in that fifteen to twenty thousand each range, so you're gonna tack on, you know, forty grand on.
I mean, the street dance, I was thinking about that the other day, is that if, if the fire department continues to do a concert, then do we really want to have a street dance that same month, you know what I mean?
Oh, were you there last Saturday night at the street dance?
I wasn't, I had to run out to North Dakota, but what did you, was it packed?
It usually is.
Yeah, it was a really good time. Yeah, well, it was just a thought, I mean, if you're talking fifteen, twenty thousand per dance, right?
I mean-
No, 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 that's a total, that's my, my, that's line item budget, so you're looking, right?
I mean, just, just good for Gary was five thousand dollars, I saw, I got a sign checked for later today, I mean.
Oh, here, let's go like this real quick.
They're, they're good, but, I mean, it's still a lot of money.
Right.
Good for Gary.
So that's in parks, general fund, that's toward the bottom here, you know, we got the fireworks for seventy-two, recreation program is twelve grand, street dances, twenty grand. Now, a lot of years, we don't, most years, we don't spend the full twenty on street dance, but it's also, depends heavily on who is available. I mean, you can say, I want these bands, but if they say, no, we're already booked, well.
Fireworks, a new amenity? Seems to me that would be new every year.
At least two years now, we've done it already, if not third.
Oh, we've been doing it for four plus years.
But it would be, because they're consumable.
It's been a few years, because we-
If that's a park amenity, would a, would a firework be a park amenity that you could use?
Yeah, that one, I think we might, it might be, might be a stretch.
No?
So for the street dances, are there sponsors for that? Is that something that we could do to offset the cost, I mean, that, that's-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we are trying to offset more costs by using the ICRA grant, or ECRAC, the Essential Regional Arts, so that is-
Yeah, some of our liquor store vendors are pretty reasonably generous on that, making banners and giving money.
Okay. I don't know, I just think that the splash pad, building a splash pad, and then residents are gonna see increases in their taxes, I think, it's, we know it's not a direct correlation, but I think taxpayers are gonna see it as well. Of course, our taxes went up, we're doing this-
We should have a sign at the splash pad when it gets built that says, this, this splash pad built with the DNR grant and-
We, we have to.
We have to.
Okay.
They want their credit too.
DNR wants their credit, yeah, right.
But then what about the water costs, you know, that's roughly five million gallons a year, I know it doesn't cost us, but you still have wear and tear on infrastructure, so, I mean, if you think about that, if, what if we were to bill that, like, we were to bill it, send it to somebody, if, if somebody wanted five million gallons of water, that'd be fifty grand. So that's fifty grand that that's costing us in debreachable assets every year.
Yep.
So, I mean, is that, is it, is it, I don't know, I, I just see it as it's a, it's very unnecessary amount of spending that we might not have to have, I mean, fifty thousand dollars a year, it's a luxury, then, a lot of people don't really have the luxury of paying extra taxes every year for stuff, so it's-
Yeah, and once we get that rolled out, that, that'll be something that we'll have to decide as well, is, are we actually going-
It's not gonna cause fifty dollars.
The whole park system is a luxury, right?
Art tree range.
Oh, it is, it is, correct, yeah. Yep, so I, I mean, I think we should look at all of it.
When the people ask for things, and it's a community-driven thing. That's what makes the difference.
Sure.
I don't, I hate rodeo jubilee days, I don't come downtown, but I support it, but I hate it. Because I don't like being around all those people. I spent ten years working at rodeo grounds. I don't go to the rodeo, but I support it. I support every bit of it. I don't go to the street dances, but I support them, because I don't like being around all these people. I see enough people all week long, I don't need to see anymore when I'm gonna be at home. But I support it, because it's a community thing, and that's what it's important. If it brings people into this community and spending money, if it's going to that liquor store and buying a twelve-pack of beer, or going to Quick Trip and buying a pizza, or whatever, or going to Jimmy's and buying a pizza, or going to Subway, or whatever, spending money in this community, that means more for this community than you'll ever understand.
Maybe, I just, I don't know, fifty grand a year in waters.
Well, that's not-
That's, well, right.
Real cost, though, because, I mean, it's not gonna cause fifty thou, we're not gonna pay ourselves for the water.
You know, so there's a-
It's not gonna cause that much, that much wear and tear on the-
There's a few things on that specifically, is one, we gotta make sure there's a timer on the system, right? Every fifteen minutes, you have to turn it on, and at any time, we can just say, done, water off, we've spent enough this year, moving on. Second, after that, is the decision, do we actually want the general fund to actually pay the water fund, and have a transfer of taxes to the enterprise fund? Or are we gonna ask the enterprise fund to simply eat it and make it up in rates?
And then, another question, what happens, what happens when we need repairs on there? You can't use the park reserve funds for it, so now we're gonna have to dip into the levy to pay for repairs.
Well, that would-
That's, that's another, increase taxes right there again.
Well, yeah, we, we could make a case as to, well, I'll talk to my auditors, we'll make a determination as to whether that, that would actually count as park infrastructure or water infrastructure. I'm prob, I would bet there's probably already some generally accepted accounting principles that would guide that, but that's not a discussion I've had yet, but either way, the ongoing maintenance, again, I think you'd have a reasonable decision, but either way, it's coming out of somebody's pocket, whether it's taxes or water rates, but.
Well, I mean, but with water rates, it's coming out of the wear and tear on the infrastructure, it's not, we don't have to charge ourselves the actual dollar amounts, right?
There's no obligation to charge yourself, we have to track the water use, but we don't have to charge ourselves for it.
Cost is the wear and tear on the, on the system, which, five million Yellins, we're talking about two hundred and seventy million, million Yellins a year. Five million is a drop in the bucket compared to the overall usage that we're talking about.
And we, and if it's entirely too much, we get to July, or August, or whatever, we're just, done for the season. I mean, it's not, I mean, that is, that is one where there's very explicit control, there are lots of things that cities do, you don't necessarily have explicit control like that, that, that would be one.
But I'm with you, I mean, I was totally against the splash pad until, until we were able to cover it with park dedication funds, and that makes sense to me, so.
It's gonna, it's still gonna cost us, I mean, we're, it's gonna affect the tax rate every year for one or two percent, I mean, it-
Does it come from that fund?
No, I know, but as far as maintenance-
That comes from people building and developing-
No, I'm saying long-term costs, with water and maintenance.
Whatever, I-
I mean, I just think it's a long-term thing that could be looked at, but, I mean, we're trying to, we're talking about trying to cut spending. I don't know where else you really cut it, other than luxury items that we don't need.
We couldn't use that money towards eleven, I think, really.
No, that's what the statute says, yeah, but you can use it for other park developments, like the pickleball upgrades to the tennis court, if we would have had to pay for that out of our pockets, so that would be an upgrade that you can use that funds for. Or if you needed to get a bigger playground system than what was there, you can use that money to do that. If you wanted to add amenity that's not there, you can do that. So it's not like we're, our hands are tied, we're just, you can't use it, you just have to have it for specific things.
Well, the thing is, is you want to use it, I mean, we're gonna have, when they have the apartment buildings coming, I mean, we're talking about five, six hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be in that fund. And that's already with spending the money for the splash pad, too, isn't it?
And my advice on that was, just think about how you spend that money, because once it's spent, and you spend that out of park dedication funds, and it feels like, hey, this is free, but now, it is, it gets queued up, it's got ongoing maintenance, there is a schedule, five, seven, ten years, whatever, and that is not paid for out of park dedication, so.
That's with any park.
Yep.
Playground equipment, not just a splash pad.
Not, not, not saying anything is right or wrong, but don't forget.
Everything gets old in parks.
Yep, absolutely.
Eventually.
And that's, you know, this is the other thing, too, is, this is the other thing, too, that council shouldn't forget, is, is, I mean, when we're talking about our capital improvement plan, we're talking about what, the money we bring into Fund nine twenty. We're pretty diligent, I mean, I have concrete curbing in there. We have every picnic bench, you know, every shelter, all of those things, other cities are gonna drop their tax rates to try to keep up with us. And they're not doing that with a capital plan that includes literally everything. And to the extent that other cities are gonna try to keep up with us while not maintaining that capital plan, it, it will come home to roost. Eventually, there will be inevitable separation between us and others, and when we look at that comparable tax advantage over since twenty seventeen, we're down almost forty percent, we're leading the pack. And we are doing it in a situation where we can reasonably continue that going forward. I think there are some other cities that I will, will just not name them, that I think are pushing to follow our lead, and I don't think they're really going to be able to maintain that push in the long run. Mary, did you have anything else?
No, I, do you want to keep going through this, or do you think we've got kind of a sense of direction that?
If council has, I mean, this is, this is budget work session, so if there's something you guys want to talk about, let's do that.
Here's one I've got for you, so the EDA revenue, so we've got the hundred and fifty thousand dollars proposed, I mean, what are we spending that on? I, I, I should know the answer to that, but I mean, we don't, what have we done lately that we've spent money out of EDA for?
So this is what-
Probably Stephanie.
Training, wages. Oh, well, is it just, is it just, your wages come from that?
All her fault.
So, just-
Training, or advertising, exposed.
It's for economic development, it's-
Well, I mean, I didn't, I didn't know that her, your, your wages come out of that fund, okay, gotcha.
So, out of this one fifty, you see on the top of the screen here, you got that one figure, that's the total EDA revenues, right? Just, just labor portion, found through workers' comp insurance, is basically half, right there.
Yeah, see, I was thinking it was just money that we- See, I was thinking it was just money that we were doing grants with or something like that.
No, and then we've got another ten thousand that's, you know, that's incidental stuff, right? That's, if you end up having a development that somebody wants to come in and talk about TIF or abatement and stuff, and you gotta end up having an attorney, you know, okay, well, we've got a pot of money to handle those prospective things. Not that I'm a fan of giving out TIF or abatement ever, but nonetheless, um, you know, same with engineering fees, right? Um, we incurred some of those, and sometimes you'll incur those in a, especially a prospective commercial development, where you don't know ahead of time if the project is gonna go through, but you still need to be sitting at the table incurring some of the costs to be able to give it a chance. Um, and at some point, you do, you know, make that decision whether you gotta pull the plug or not, but, um, so some of those types of things. There's a small allocation for, you know, the standard technology and communication stuff, but, yeah, a lot of it is half, is, is labor on that one, so.
I will say, I, Stephanie has been a ray of sunshine in here, and I've seen a few people in her position in my time in this council. She, she does a lot of work. She's, huh? She's, she's done a fabulous job, and there's been a couple people in her position. I think you can remember them. I think we've been through three or four of them since she's been here in our time on council.
Yeah, I just was thinking of it as, I was only thinking of it as the fund where we're, I, because I suppose half of her wages are covered out of.
So.
The other, uh, moment we combined those two positions, I guess, years ago now.
She is right here.
Really?
Fifty, fifty percent planning zoning, ten percent billing, forty percent EDA.
Okay.
So that's, that's our breakdown on.
Okay, well, that makes more sense to me than, I just was thinking it was more that we were using it for grants.
That much? I'm just getting her goat over there. Well, I do have to say, like I said, in, in mine and Dan's tenure, Dan's a year or two behind me of been on this council, we've had a lot of staff change, but we got a pretty good, solid staff set right now, and I'm, we had some good people that just couldn't deal with what was going on, and moved forward and moved on, and Josie kinda come in and some of that, end of the turmoils, and there's members, a few of those people too, but it's, we got a good staff, and I think we worked pretty darn lean in there. Because I do, when I first got on council, there was assistance to assist, assistance to department heads. There was probably twice as many people sitting in there.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Two building inspectors at one time.
Yep, two building inspectors at one time. I think, uh, I don't remember if we ever had an assistant administrator or not.
Right, yeah.
I couldn't remember, but I think there was, you know, we had the city clerk, we had Anna sitting back there, and there was another person sitting right behind the corner with her, and, I mean, there was a lot of, a lot of staff, and we've cut down a lot of staff, and they, those gals wear multiple hats, so. We're fortunate to get the building official that we have, because he is carrying inspector's card and the official card, so he's, you have to have the official, or, you know, and then an inspector, or you have, he is, Matt's doing both. So, we got that base covered.
I have a question, just.
Yeah.
So, the new building, the police are moving into.
Yep.
Is, is that part of the police budget, or is that part of the city budget, if it's city-owned, or is it, wouldn't it be city?
Well, so, all of, all of the core functions of the city, kind of the stuff that we think of as like the primary stuff, all sits in the general fund, that's all city. PD is inside of that. Now, the expenditures to purchase that building and the money that we're gonna need to outfit it, that is coming out of Fund Nine Twenty. Nine Twenty is, Nine Twenty is just like the general fund, except it's for capital. One-on-one is a general fund for operating, and that's, that's it. And the reason we do that is simply to be able to help, help clarify where the money is being spent and to help keep levies steady. So before, we had this, kind of this thing where it was, it'd be wild, up and down, over and over and over, and, you know, ten percent decreases work out great in the years you get those, but if you're doing this, that means you have ten percent increases on the other side eventually, um, so.
You have a ten percent decrease, then you jumped it up ten percent increase. In reality, it was a twenty percent increase, because you went from minus ten to zero to ten, that's twenty percent.
So.
All right, any other, uh, specific questions for, for Mike, unless, Mike, you have some points that you wanna?
Um, I was just gonna glance through this and see what, um, water, um, big changes in the, coming up for capital will be in water, we've kind of touched on that, right? Um, we're gonna end up with some capital expenditures that weren't currently on the list. Um, if per capita water use stays low, we can push those things out quite a bit. Um, if per capita water use stays high, those expenditures are gonna come sooner.
I had a quick question, I don't know if we maybe have the numbers on that yet, but do we know if those signs helped at all, and I don't know, have we had to send any letters out, or have we seen any improvement on?
When I, when I talked to Jim, I met with Jim and a guy from Bolton and Mink, um, the other day, um, yeah, he said, yeah, it's, it's improved.
Yeah, that's great.
Hundred and forty-seven letters.
Okay.
That was as of two weeks ago, so probably a hundred and sixty letters, I guess.
Any angry calls on it, or?
No, they weren't angry, I mean, although the letters didn't even say you were in violation, it's just basically a reminder of.
We went with the one that I had drafted up and stuff?
Similar.
Yeah.
But it just basically said that, here's the ordinance. Yeah, it didn't say they were in violation or anything, or there's a penalty or.
We didn't go with the one that I drafted.
Yeah, okay.
Then if that's the case.
Yeah, so there'll be, there'll be some of that, I'm probably, we're probably not gonna know a definitive on that. I probably, for next meeting, I'll probably just, we'll have to present what we've had, because we're not gonna get the well study done until at least September. So we're just gonna have to figure that out. Normally, by then, I would've already wanted the rate study done. So, if the, how, depending on this time's out, we might just re-up the water rates for the new year, and then we could adjust them at any point in the time, you know, whether it's February, March, April, whatever we need to do. But with conservation, those rates go up less, without conservation, they're gonna go up more, but I think everybody should expect water rates some way or another are gonna have to go up.
So can.
We can't add millions and millions of dollars of expenditures and not have them go up at least some amount.
So when you did the, the numbers, the splash pad wasn't incorporated in that, can you give us, um, I guess, uh, a plan or something that incorporates that, because if that's forty thousand gallons a day, that's six gallons per resident added, so that's gonna hurt the infrastructure even worse than what you had projected, is there?
W, I, what I would do originally here, what I would do initially is more of a wait and see, right? I mean, because what Bolton and Mink had, when they, when they gave us those numbers originally, they were made a base assumption about a certain number of hours per day just static. Um, in my experience, for example, I live in Atsigo, the splash pad there, there are a lot of days where it's not running.
Okay.
And I don't see anybody there. Um, and it's, and ironically enough, on some really hot days, there's nobody there, because it's just too hot. Which also seems a little counterintuitive, but that's, so, and to the extent that we don't have to pay ourselves, base, the base consumption rate for, um, per gallon is, um, point, I think we're at point three-one, right? So three tenths of a penny per gallon is, is roughly what any ran, average resident is paying. That's not the total I'm giving up, right? I have a margin within that for profit.
Profit, yep.
And so it's only the remainder that I'm out, so let's just say it's on, I actually only out two tenths, right? Um, so we kinda wanna wait and see on that. I'm hopeful that it's gonna be considerably less on an average per day than what Bolton and Mink is saying. And additionally, if it comes right down to it, if we have to choose between, I, you know, we let the splash pad run whenever we want, and we're gonna nail ourselves to the wall on future capital, well, we should just turn it off, right? I mean, it's, it's infrastructure that's still there, and you can turn it back on another day or another year, but if it, if it really got to a point where we're, we are seriously out five or ten million gallons a year on that one thing, you may be limited, right?
Anything about six gallons per resident per day is running your faucet in your house for three minutes.
Right.
An average faucet runs two point one gallons per minute.
Yeah, this.
That's.
Yeah, leaky toilets, leaky faucets are.
Toiletten leaks? There's a lot less more water being used than that.
Yeah, but we're already way over average in the city for per capita use of water by almost thirty gallons. So if we're gonna add another six gallons to that, we're even more further over, and that's why we're in the situation we're in, where, where our, our infrastructure's gonna cost us more money, because we weren't expecting to be using that much, yet we're adding more water usage to it, it doesn't make sense. So it's, I'd, I'd just be interesting to see with those, the splash pad estimations, maybe you could talk to Atsigo and see. I mean, because if, if it's gonna, if we're not gonna be able to get a well four in by the time we need it, because the splash pad, well, maybe we'd have to decide, we need to know that information to decide beforehand if we're even gonna open it, or, I mean, we don't wanna go in half-cocked, not knowing the information, I mean, I think the water stuff was kind of a surprise to all of us, because we didn't have all the information, so I think it's important to get that.
Well, we're not even sure how that information was obtained at forty thousand gallons.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if you could get more.
Have we set hours on the splash pad, or even months open? I mean, we can, we can set hours to make sure we can keep that water usage to a, you know, a reasonable amount.
I would guess it'd be open in, you know, from basically Memorial to Labor Day.
Well, I know, but I think what George is saying is, I mean, council has the privilege to set it however they want. I mean, you guys could say it's open for the first two million gallons. I mean, you, you could, it's open from four to six, I mean, you could, whatever you can dream up.
Four hours a day.
Yeah.
Six hours a day instead of, what was, I, I'm not sure what the figures were based on, eight hours a day, ten hours a day, seven?
Yeah, I, Jason did have, I'd have to ask, I did ask Jason at that one time, but my, my recollection, I don't remember the details, but the recollection was, it was basically a, we're gonna assume a certain amount, a number of hours today and a certain number of gallons, and just straight, and.
I think it was pretty late that we were even gonna have it open till, because it wasn't gonna be fenced in or anything like that, I think, was.
Be the same as the regular park hours, was what.
Yeah, right, so that would be, so if they figured all the way till ten o'clock or whatever, was that the regular park hours? Yeah, so I mean, that would be, nobody's gonna use it that late, or, and in Princeton, I think it closes at like six, you know?
In the summer, you know, the kids don't have school, on the weekends, you could have it open a little later, weeknights, maybe not so much.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, 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 it's.
Even if the full amount of water is used, you're still less than two percent of our allotted two hundred and seventy million gallons, and if we, if we, I think, probably we need to add that fourth well anyway.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, we're gonna have to add the fourth well no matter what, it's just how quickly does it come.
How quickly do we have to handle it?
And the same with the fifth well is gonna have to come.
That's, that's why I asked to see the figures.
How quickly does it come?
And if we're seeing improvement with what we're doing right now, I mean, that, you know, that shouldn't be, probably shouldn't be an issue.
And I think, and I think we, I think.
You gotta remember, this whole issue was brought up by a perfect storm, dry weather.
Oh, right, correct.
Water, water, our water tower being down, and then a water being, it blew from something that was built back in the sixties, let's, okay, perfect storm.
And that's why I wanna project now, so we don't have to worry about that happening again, so we get all the information before.
It could rain, like, because never have anybody watering any grass, you don't know that.
This would be the other thing too, is, is having a utility manager that's actually dedicated to this will be really, really helpful in keeping tabs on that stuff, and keeping an eye on that continuously, and having there be that, that weekly, monthly review, like, that's, uh, there'll actually be somebody who actually has time to do that work, that'll be really helpful.
So I, I assume with that DNR grant, we cannot charge for the people to use the splash pad?
We can charge, um, but.
Has that ever been discussed?
Yes, I would advise against it, the cost, after working in Princeton and managing that splash park, it's not advantageous at all.
Okay.
It would cost us more money than we would bring in, so.
Um, so, yeah, I was just looking through here, that's kind of the big deal on that, and we'll, we're gonna have to just play that as it goes. Until we get the well study and we get some other stuff in place, we might just have to roll with what we have in water currently, but, um, we'll, we'll adjust that as we need to, and if we have to change water rates in February or April or whatever, we'll just, we'll do what we need to do and, and keep that going. Sure, we don't have any dramatic changes from what we've had, um, getting close to some bond payoffs on those, so that's good. Stormwater, it's heading in the right direction, right? We've cut the rates and we're trying to draw the funds down. Um, we got through all our big projects, all we need to do is that ongoing maintenance, um, so we'll keep monitoring that and make sure that the, the reduction in those stormwater rates is appropriately pulling, um, pulling revenues down, so we'll keep an eye on that. Liquor fund has been gangbusters. Um, net cash flow, two eighty-three after a three fifty transfer. That gives me a lot of hope that at year seven, there is a, year eight, there is actually a real payoff option on those bonds. I mean, and this is, this is, um, budgeted pretty conservatively, that, that story's really worked out well. I was just looking this morning, is from twenty seventeen when I got here to now, basically July to July, um, revenues have more than doubled.
That's, that extra cash flow there, I mean, that's, that's after, that's not servicing the debt out of, that, that still has to be serviced out of that cash flow, right? Or you're saying that's, that's serviced.
That's after debt, that's after the transfer, and this, uh.
Well, yeah, I understand after the transfer, but also after the debt serviced out of it already?
That's bank.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I was, when I recommended going forward, I was confident we were gonna make a go of it.
Yeah.
I, I only dreamed about that, and I didn't actually, I, Lord knows, I was never gonna actually say that that's what the result was gonna be.
You were taking gummy bears and, weren't you?
What's that?
You were eating gummy bears, weren't you?
Well.
Did you see gummy bears?
Well.
You dreamt about that?
When I, when I first put this number on paper, uh, putting together the budget, I thought, oh my stars, I must've made a mistake, but that, it, that's really genuinely how this is working out, so, that's awesome.
I mean, do you think that we have to leave all of that in there, or do you think that we could move some of that to help offset tax rate this year, or?
You can, but it, I, long run, I'm kinda with Luke on that one, I think it's better to stack that cash until we get a little closer to that payoff amount that we would need in year seven. Um, and then, and then once we're at least closer and we can see that, I mean, because we can't pay off before seven, right? Seven is the call date, right? It doesn't matter if you have all the cash in year five, that you are not allowed to pay it off yet. So, but if we can get closer to that call amount, you know, and so I can know that that's within reach, that's within touch, yeah, then you start, then you start moving some of that. We still gotta maintain, um, you know.
Year seven is twenty-eight, which is there already.
Um, there's twenty twenty-one issue, so twenty twenty-eight. Um, that's, that's how I would go about that. I mean, if, if we got to a point where we're like, boy, the goal we really wanted on our tax rate is within twenty thousand bucks, yeah, yes, but let's just get our twenty thousand bucks, but I wouldn't, boy, I really would not, I'd really wanna pay those bonds off early, save that interest money and start that extra transfer up, because once those bonds are paid off, that's two fifty a year, an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year that comes into the general fund. At least, that's the guaranteed amount. If you're, if you're ma, if we're making this much money still.
Yeah, right.
After that, well, yeah, now we have, genuinely, we can start talking about whether or not we're gonna transfer seven fifty, eight fifty, instead of three, I mean, that's, that, that, that gets to be really substantial, and to the extent that the people putting the money into that store are northbound traffic on sixty-five, I'm, I'm a big fan of that. I'm a big fan of that, let somebody else pay for that. Yeah, I think at, at the end here, debt service funds, um, big thing here is, yeah, we're still on track. Uh, final debt service payment on those, uh, refunded tax haven bonds will be, uh, twenty thirty, I wanna say it was September or something like that, twenty thirty. Um, and then that'll be the last debt we have that is funded by a tax levy. And at that point, um, there's a very, very high probability we will be the largest city in the state that is debt, levy debt-free. Right now, Oak Grove holds that title. Any other questions? And then, of course, like I said, it is, and I'm, I'm available all the time, so. Any other questions, guys?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you, Mike. And the rest of the staff for.